Hey Heather, a letter for everyone. I think I spoke with all of you about it during budget time. I'm just asking for an increase in the poll worker pay as well as their food allowance. It hasn't been raised since before I became clerk in 16. Meal allowance, I'm asking for it to go up to $10 a meal, $20 a day, which I requested in my budget for '23, so I'm not asking for anything outside of what I've already asked. As far as poll worker pay, when I took over as clerk, we had more poll workers at each location. There was a team for each precinct at each polling location, and we've eliminated that to one team per location. So I already have it in my budget to up the pay. And what it is would be you guys approving it and doing a resolution, and then me taking it to the commissioners, then hopefully approving it and then doing a resolution for them.
I'll make that recommendation that we follow that path of this proposal.
A second. One favor. It's looking easy.
Alright, thank you.
First thing I wanted to discuss is I sent out 2023 council meeting dates to see if you guys would like to approve those, and we can get those on the website, since commissioners have approved their meeting dates as well. It's always the second Tuesday of the month, except for Fair Week, which is delayed one week.
I motion to approve those dates, no scene or complex.
A second. One favor.
Okay, the next item I have to discuss is the Saluda Township trustee is, has to have a resolution passed to submit his budget because his board has a firefighter and has a family member on it, and they're not allowed to do that by themselves. I have resolution 2022-16, which is the state form that I was told that I need for you guys to approve. Their budget is, their general budget will be $33,490. Their township assistance budget will be $13,000. The fire budget is $16,000, and their park and recreation is $15,000. And I just need a motion for you guys to approve that resolution.
I'll make that motion to approve that resolution. I'll second.
One favor.
And I will pass this around. I'll need everyone's signature on this resolution. And then...
I forgot that I had one thing circled that I was going to ask on the date of the adoption meeting. It lists January 20 or 2000.
That was probably the time on my resolution. I'll change if you want to change that.
It was on the form that came out where we had online force the four divisions of their budget and then, yeah, the levy percentage. It was the topic.
Oh, it was on the...
You wanted it to be 2000 or January 20.
Okay, so that is a screenshot that he had actually taken from what he has in Gateway. So that's nothing I can change. So I'm assuming that they will make him change that whenever he isn't there.
And the date of the public hearing, yeah, it's listed as August 30th, 2023.
He had his public hearing.
That was my assumption there.
Yeah. Okay, so the next thing I was going to go over, I am working on records retention still. I was just going to let you guys know, I was in contact with the state, and they are going to take some of our records that qualify to be transferring their census information from the 18, 19 hundreds. So other things they are not interested in right now, so I am going to contact the Historical Society and the library and see if they would be interested in some. And with state approval, I could have those moved so that they are stored properly. The next thing I was going to talk to you about was 2023 trash card sales. We will have the trash cards in the office on November 1st, where we will accept a cash check or a credit card. And then we will be visiting sites to sell on Wednesday, November 9th, at DuPont, Thursday, November 10th, at Rikers Ridge, Monday, November 14th, at Chelsea, Tuesday, November 15th, at Deputy, and Friday, November 18th, at Canaan Springs Works. And once again, we are just going to take cash and check at the trash card sites that worked really well last year, and I have already asked the sheriff to have backup security for those dates as well.
And most people don't, don't cash instead because I have to work it together.
Yes.
The site that we've been making for checking.
Can you run through those dates for me one more time?
Yes. So it is November 7th.
She sent it.
I've sent it. And so I did go ahead and put our historical data there with the trash card sales, and actually 2022 was down just a little in numbers, but I think it helped our office by doing the off-site sales. Definitely.
Yeah, you had that money already in early, and people realized that it needed to be done.
Yes. And that is everything for me, except for...
It'll be advertising on that date for us to obviously watch that before.
I would give the information to Bob as well, and maybe he could help fill that information.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we can certainly share some. I assume you might.
Sarah would make a Facebook post.
Would Sarah possibly send that out on the alert?
Yes, we can.
I think that would be a great idea, because, you know, a lot of us get that, and everything, and I think that would be great, you know, just to remind maybe the day before, you know, for DuPont.
For each site, right.
For each site. I think that would be great.
Yes.
If we do that.
I will make a note of that as well. Okay, and then we have transfers and additions.
Commissioner.
Oh.
Yeah, we have this beautiful question.
I put him. I didn't have the correct one. So then the commissioner will...
You know.
I'm ready. I thought I'd kind of be updating one for myself. I can't believe I did not.
What does it say? Yeah, it was in the... It was a big proof up there. I think she sent that out.
I can make a copy too for you there.
No, it's okay. I'll copy.
It's not a problem.
Okay, I'm gonna try and work through this. I'm here for assistance for the animal shelter. As you all know, the sad events that happened last week. And kind of ties into that, we have been talking about camera quotes. Well, injury to that, we had a break-in Saturday night, so I'm looking at what cameras were running and footage is there, so that's not the issue. But anyway, she had requested September the 2nd and gave an RFP to ADS, Cussons, and Electric Tech. To this point in time, I've only got one response, or she only got one response. So I kind of want to know what your direction is on that. I don't think it's fair to put that gentleman's quote out if we're going to do something else. Okay, another thing, we talked about the expansion of the cat room. I had met with three contractors, and one gave me a quote. So it's, I don't know, it wears on you to put it loosely. But anyway, another thing, security of the building is the key, so there's issue because a quite a bit of staff turnover. My thought on that was if we could do like here, key reader, that way you control them, they're $3 apiece, staff leaves, they don't give them back, you key them out. Not only that, the part-time, you can put in their hours, so they're only there when they're supposed to be. But I'm just, I need some help, shelter needs some help, so we can get some of these issues out of the way. So I'm here to ask you, how do we go about this? Like I said, I've got a camera quote, but I don't think it's fair to put it out if we're going to try and get two more. You know, from September the 2nd, it's kind of like you, if you're not interested, you know. One never replied, the other guy looked at it. I called him again today, he said, "I'll have you the quote received." You know, we're here, I have no quote. So...
There was cameras there at one time, and those are absolutely no good at all.
Some of them worked, some of them didn't.
Some do, some do not. Is there any of them, can be, still, they're still working, they're not...
No, they're all, they're the old coax, nobody does that anymore. Everybody uses voice-over IP or, you know, CAD 6. So those are the two main concerns right now, is the camera system, plus I think the security of the building itself, plus, you know, for the staff also. And I do have a quote on the doors, I do know how to do that, so, because we've done quite a few of them.
The keyless entry, was your reference?
The keyless, yes. You can either do a small fob, like a teardrop, or cards like these here. And like I said, every time that's swiped, you got a date, time, who did it.
All the time.
Yeah, hey, what was it going there, or what were you trying to do there? You know, not that that's an issue, but, you know, of course, Duane, we got Duane, the key Nazi downtown, so that's not a problem, but up there, you know...
I'll watch some prices roughly.
2382, 2382, and that's for the electric door, the striker, you know, the fob system controlled and has a reader outside. But like I said, the nice thing about it, you've got a running log, you could even use it for clocking in if you wanted to, because you could pull that spreadsheet up, hey, you were supposed to be here at 8:00, you didn't come in till 8:35.
But to get that, then come to the courthouse, and cannot tell from courthouse.
We didn't have to advertise to add...
Is there anything, is there anything left that any, like under the courthouse, is there anything that is, that hasn't been used that was, you know, for repairs or for anything like that?
We're putting money back in from insurance reimbursements of $24,000 for general repair, but I don't know if there's anything else that had been planned at that point.
I would say it might be already there, that it could be already done, you know.
What's the ballpark on the cameras?
The lost revenue under the stormwater.
Dave said there's some money in the lost revenue under the stormwater.
For the RP fund. The stormwater is not going to be, at least what it is right now, it's not going to be $150,000, so there's some funds there. I don't know exactly.
I think this is something that needs to be...
I have to re-advertise.
Or sooner than later, is what I'm thinking, you know, we need to prove all this tomorrow.
And security cameras, what's the ballpark on that?
Yeah. What is it?
I really don't want to, because it's, to me, it's not fair, I mean...
So at least it's over $25,000, you're having to get more than one quote, right?
It's not anywhere near that.
Okay, so then you don't have to have it one, you don't have to have that. You don't have to have it one quote, if it's not over $25,000.
It's not, I'll tell you, it's half of that.
So then we don't have that quote, and then quote by standards.
I mean, Lindsay tried, and I've tried. If you don't get a response, you just don't get one.
Right. I would say...
Because they are, you only have to get one quote, or you have to get more than one quote, if it's over $25,000.
I mean, we've always tried to do three, just for fair and to keep it transparent. Chris knows that, so...
It's early required, if it's over $25,000.
Yeah.
And the cat room, the expansion, I guess, from the contractor right now, but what type of thought for legislation?
Have you been up in the shelter? Okay, you know, when you walk in, it's just, okay. Thought process was, the cat room is so small, it could be used for other things, is to bring it out eight foot. So you have that wall, it comes over, this is glass, use the door that's there and bring it to the front and use it, okay? So then you have another door and a wall that comes all the way over to like where the counter and everything is, with a four-foot by three-foot opening and like a countertop. So when you come in, you address those people behind the counter, they have some source of security. Otherwise, it's wide open, they would have to dive through or bail over that opening. There's been some disgruntled people that kind of force their way to the back, and that way, hey, I'm here to look at a dog or a cat, or I'm here to pick mine up, they can reach over and unlock that door and let that person in. Otherwise, it's, I'm going back there and do what I want to do. And I do have a quote on that.
That'd be like a half-wall type deal.
Actually, it would be a partial wall this way, and go over, and then another wall all the way over. In other words, like this, this, and this, with the door, and then the opening, and they can bring their countertops and stuff right up to it.
Okay.
What kind of quote?
Not to exceed 18.
$18,000.
And that was for additional door and...
Well, I think at the present, we need to make sure that the security, the cameras, and the, and the doors, and a few things, that has, needs to be like yesterday, you know?
Right. Well, the saving grace, the security alarm worked, because it did go off.
You're talking potentially for all three of those, the camera system, new door, car reader feature, and expansion of the cat room with the new counter, wall. I mean, from my quick numbers, no more than like $34,000 potentially.
Okay, if you want the camera quote, it was $12,610.
I brought them around to him. Yeah, I mean, that's something, can you get on...
I was gonna say, I think those two things are the most important due. I mean, I know you want the other for the security, but if we get this, that will help with security, if you've got your cameras and everything going, so that you know exactly, and if it can be brought up on the computer and this stuff.
Well, this was for 16 cameras, so the place will be covered.
Covered, 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 really, really.
I just would rather not wait a month. If we're looking at available funds and looking to have to advertise and or appropriate, and see where this can be taken from, and knowing how delayed and slow construction is in general right now, I guess I'd rather look to see if the funding is available and potentially appropriate the entire amount, which would be less than $35,000.
Sure, it's raining, rainy day.
And come back and tell them, yeah, we're gonna save the dollar situation.
If you could take the first two from the regular...
Yeah, the cat room, you know, it's already October.
And the cat room, yeah.
You know, whether he's done this year or not, is itchy, but it'd be nice to go ahead and incorporate.
Go ahead, incorporate.
We would just have to incorporate if it goes beyond...
Yes, yes.
And if you're...
Well, could we take the first two out, the first two out of the courthouse, which you said you already had funds there, is that correct?
Yes, because I'm, part of your additionals tonight is...
Is going to be putting back what the insurance...
Putting money back in from insurance reimbursement.
Then I would say, take that from that, and then go ahead and go rainy day on the other.
Go rainy day on the...
Yeah, because we did rainy day for something else that was at the animal shelter.
Addition.
Addition.
So you have a motion?
That is my motion.
Make your motion. Got a second.
Second.
One favor.
Thanks, appreciate it. I want to throw one other thing out there, and Warren brought this up, the new fence, they've got the posts in, it's going to be great. But anyway, the four runs, right now, they're grassy, okay? Later on, they're going to be muddy, and then it's going to be an issue. So if we put gravel, that's something we'll continually fight, replenishing it, dressing it up and all that. Plus, they could dig out front or back, or get aggressive and go side to side. So I talked to Floyd, and he said, "It's not a problem, we can pour concrete, that way it's secure, you're done, we can slope it away from the building." And so I talked to Dave about that, and Chrissy, we thought we had from the kennels, we had originally 20, we donated 10, and the city donated 10, and we only used 18 of that. So we were hoping there was 2,000 floating around somewhere, but anyway, I've got a bit on that also. Maybe Dave and I and the commissioner come up with that, but just wanted to give you a heads up on that, but to me, that's the way to go.
I know we've been doing a lot of base upgrades over there, but we know we're landlocked, and that facility will never survive long-term.
I agree with you 100%.
Has there been any look at pricing out a new facility? Just so we know what that money looks like.
Not to my knowledge, but I do know remember when Jenny, it was like probably $600,000, and that was what?
That was another...
Five years ago?
That she, yeah, she brought to the...
So you can hook it.
Quite a bit.
Forty percent of that or more now.
It'd be nice to see a vegetarian quote to understand what we're looking at, because, you know, we've been in 20 here and 30 there, and it just...
Yeah, I agree with you 100%. I hate to put a turnip on a corpse.
Right, and not to these, you know, several of these things absolutely need to be done, not trying to say that, but just long-term and being disturbs of the type of...
You know, this is like a $4,000 to $6,000 item, so it's not like...
Well, $4,000 to $6,000, but you know what I'm saying.
I understand, like the cameras, if we did something else, we can move those, we can take them with us, we can take the fence with us, we can take the kennels with us.
Right.
But, oh, I agree with you, I hate to put a turnip on a corpse, but we're up against our times right now, so, and I don't know what the alternative is, but we gotta, we gotta work through it.
I mean, what's in that, all your funds?
Yes, $122,000, I believe.
Yeah.
It's a hundred and twenty-two, $275.
I think when that fund was created, I believe there is wording that it is for a new facility.
A new facility.
But the shame of that, a lot of donations that weren't earmarked.
Went into that fund.
And we have no way to know.
Right.
Yeah. But anyway, that's my bad, okay? Thank you very much.
My point is, with that, with that money in there, which is good seed money for a new facility, we have the land over here by the jail to, you know, get something rolling in that direction.
And that was kind of what we thought, thought about it one time, you know, because we had bought 5 acres and stuff at the time, that was part of it, yeah.
We could pursue and get a somewhat rough design on it, get an idea, sort of footage.
It'd be nice to know that.
I mean, I think that land is...
It's inevitable, it's got to happen.
Still value on your, on land there.
We can move the kennels, we can move the cameras, they have film for these two, they're sealed, take the fence off, cut the posts.
I wouldn't have to pursue that to see what, you know, the lands are...
Yeah, you're not out $400,000 to purchase ground again, so...
No, it's there.
Okay, we're trying to get something rolling.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, all.
Thank you.
Transfer some additions.
Oh, there's one more, I did add this too. So there is an ordinance that I believe the city has already passed, I sent you information on it, the commissioners have already had two readings of this, and they went ahead and voted to not do a third reading, since there was no objection, and they approved it, but it is in general local agreement to terminate the cable advisory board, and it does have a place for the council to agree to that.
Do you have a motion?
I would think so.
And every, and over, everybody has to sign on it, the city does, and over, the council and the county.
Yes. All of the assets will be liquidated, and what funds are left after their bills are paid will be divided amongst the three entities.
I don't like it at all. I'll make the motion to terminate the cable advisory board.
I would, I was gonna say, I feel like, do we need to give an opportunity for anyone in the audience to share a thought? And, and as well, just making sure it's on record, what this governing body might suggest for future recordings of meetings, so that the average reader or listener out there, he doesn't think that we're trying to keep any, you know, meeting secret or...
Right. I was wrong, it was their first reading.
It was, yeah.
It was their first reading. So we could read tonight, correct? If you guys wanted to read that tonight, we did like three versions the other night, so...
The other two, you were right.
Yeah. Or if you wanted to save it for the next.
So do they, do they plan to go ahead and record until the end of the year, or do they, are they planning on stopping?
Yes, sir? I'm a member of the cable advisory, well, I filmed for the cable advisory board. If you'd like, I can answer that question for you, because I, and I've got a couple questions myself, I'm gonna record myself, hi, this is the second time I've gotten to do this. Anyway, one, so to my understanding, we're not going to film past when the cable advisory board gets dissolved, so that should probably answer your question, we're not going to film for the rest of the year. Number two, I do have a question for you, is this the opportunity for me to ask? Okay, what's going to happen to the equipment?
I believe in the ordinance, it states that any equipment that belongs to the cable advisory board will be liquidated, and then the proceeds will be divided amongst the three entities.
Okay, forgive my naivety here, liquidated means sold, correct? Okay, and that would be in an auction, or whereabouts would that be? Okay, and do we know the date of that auction? Do we know where that might be, or do we have any details on that yet? Okay. All right, thank you.
Well, we would certainly want to make sure that was public and or advisory board members, not the cable board knew when that would take place.
But if we don't pass anything on this tonight, then they will have to continue to correct.
Yeah, they have to read one more time.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Right, so we would have to bring it to next meeting as well, so...
And, and would it be the decision of the commissioners moving forward if this indeed gets passed after a very hard number of readings and is dissolved in partnership with the town, the neighborhood, and the city as well? Would the commissioners then be tasked to find out how, when, and who, and how, would it work going to record future meetings? Obviously, we know about a year ago, the city chose to use...
We're talking about...
Basic Equipment YouTube channel. Yeah, just again, I guess just for public record that we're not certainly, don't have the hopes to not record meetings that were, continue to keep those public.
So do I need to withdraw my motion?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay. Do you want to wait until the commissioners do the second reading then? Okay.
Let's go.
Okay, so then, transfers. This is a transfer submitted by the veteran service officer from account number 1,000, 021, 022, 200 outreach, to account number 1,000, 021, 032, 200, travel, in the amount of $300.
I would make a motion that we approve that, are we, are we holding off until the end?
No, I have to do this.
You mean, Julie said it would be... I would make a motion that we approve that outside of the transfer.
One favor.
For Veterans Office. And a quick side note, the Veterans Stand Down event that was just held about a week ago, I think her volunteers and staff did a wonderful job, their luncheon was wonderful, and there was a lot of boost and information there, and had a really good turnout.
The next, I will be doing additionals, and I have them grouped together by how they were submitted, and then we will do the resolution at the end, but I will need approvals in between. So the first additional is 1,000, 003, 0211, 00 Treasure Office Supplies, in the amount of $425. This is insurance reimbursement. And then 11, 38, 001, 0346, 00 Port House General Repair of Equipment, this is also insurance reimbursement for $24,090. This is also insurance reimbursement for twenty-four thousand ninety-two dollars and fifty-seven cents. Motion on that.
Motion, I'll second.
Okay, and then I have an additional for eleven forty-two zero zero one zero one zero one zero zero, which is from jail miscellaneous dispersments in the amount of three thousand three hundred twenty-seven dollars and forty-three cents.
And what kind miscellaneous things are there?
There's no explanation.
There was no explanation. That was what was submitted to me.
Three, I think, from the sheriff.
From the sheriff.
Yeah, there was an explanation on any.
I believe, just because of the amounts, I believe they have overspent and they're just trying to shore up their accounts.
And I guess like the, maybe not even the fifteen thousand on Roger motor, but the the county general to office supply Roger motor travel and that leads online, though those don't bother me as much as, yeah, I just didn't have, there was no explanation particularly in the institutional supplies asking for an extra ten thousand, yeah.
So the miscellaneous on that is normally repairs to the jail. When there are plumbing repairs or when they have to replace the windows, the padded cell that they've had to replace a couple of times this year. That all normally comes from from jail.
Yes, and it cannot?
No, it can, that's why, I think those repairs have taken that line negative is why they're asking for this amount.
I would like some more explanation on some of these things, you know, that you were just kind of going blindly.
I'm happy to, I know I'll probably email the department heads, say the next year specifically. We need to quickly fill that sheet and additional explanation.
Are any of these critical that cannot be told till the next meeting and have explanations?
I don't think so. I think we could wait till next meeting if you would like to do that. And I will request his presence to explain.
In the institutional supplies for next year, there was a three thousand six hundred dollar increase, but again, we're at the beginning of October and he's asked for an additional ten thousand. I want to make sure this doesn't impact next year's ask as well.
I will, if you guys want, I will request his presence, maybe him and Grace to come and explain those requests.
That'd be a good idea.
Okay.
Yep.
And then, so that changes the resolution for the additionals in the amount.
You have to.
But we can.
The insurance claim one, you have to do that one?
Yes, we still do need to approve the resolution so that I can submit the insurance reimbursements. But it would only be in that amount now instead of the full amount. So we would be doing the equipment. The resolution would be approved in the amount of.
Seventy-four.
Twenty-four thousand five hundred seventeen dollars and fifty-seven cents.
We see that, please, twenty-four thousand left.
Twenty-four thousand five hundred seventeen dollars and fifty-seven cents.
And not then, why would that not include the treasures, the four, well, the.
It did.
The provision was four twenty-nine ninety.
It includes the twenty-four thousand ninety-two dollars and fifty-seven cents and the four hundred twenty-five dollars. So just need a motion on the.
Motion for the resolution.
Resolution.
I'll make a motion. Pass it. On favor.
Just pass that around for signatures. And then that is everything for. The next is just our budget. Out, yes. We do have one more thing. Yeah, so she's saying the next meeting, you guys are submitting that much. And then sixty-five hundred for dumpsters for. Okay.
Gotcha.
Good.
This is from Sarah, so. She's, so she'll submit request next month. She just wanted to let you know about, we're getting about ten thousand dollars in computer maintenance, just a lot of things that'll go on. She'll put it in this request, but that's coming in. And then the dumpsters for the area that's been flooded, about, did you say sixty-five?
It's about sixty-five hundred dollars.
So far, she's, it's been about forty-eight hundred and she's got a couple more coming, so those are.
Will that be in turn be reimbursed through the FEMA?
We can see.
Because I know Troy said, told me the CD that FEMA was coming Monday, so that, I mean, I don't have any problem paying it, but then maybe it can be turned in.
So, yeah.
We can keep track of it.
Yeah.
Just like we said with.
That will be coming next meeting.
Anything from the audience?
Sure. Hi, I'm Kevin Kellums. And trying not to crowd my commissioner here. Great, everybody, thanks. I just wanted to say a couple of things as a fan of transparency and accountability. First, I'm talking about now the Jefferson proving ground matter. I worked once for Senator Richard Luther and my, I think, first year working for him, he sent me down to retrieve the first BRAC results, so base realignment enclosure committee results. And in that envelope were all the closures for Indiana. And that included everything in Indiana rights, so, you know, think about Chris and everybody who was on the board and threatened by that, including Jefferson proving ground and what we called back then the powder plant, Charlestown, which is now, you know, a massive economic development portal and driving a lot of our opportunity here now. So I brought that back to him and presented it to him and he opened it in front of me and I saw Jefferson proving ground on that list. And, you know, was shocked by it because my family is just across the road, if you will, across four twenty-one, fifth generation across the road. And so it really spoke to me. I have looked back across Indiana history and looked at the fact that I think that our piece of land, our site is the only one that was not given back to, and I'm happy to be corrected, given back to the local community after that fact. Now, that's yesterday's news and I like to think about yesterday, I was taught this by a friend, yesterday is a cancel check, but tomorrow is a promissory note. And when I think about Jefferson proving ground now, I think about it as one of the greatest opportunities we have going forward as a community and as a county about things we could do that would help us all going forward and which could benefit all people in the city and the county. So it's one of those things that unifies us, city and county. And as I understand the original intent, and we can, you know, others can argue over this because I'm not fortunately elected official, I once was and I'm glad I'm not now. But my understanding of the original intent was it was amount not to exceed a figure, but not actually committed. In other words, if a study were to come in under that, it would be less than that. It would be, it would meet the needs as we understood it at that time. And I would think that if we were to move not to at least entertain the opportunity to see what the economic benefit would be for our county and for our city from this point forward, that that would be an opportunity lost against which there's no way to really assign a dollar figure. And so what I worry about is public dollars being spent without entertaining that potential benefit. When we look at River Ridge, we see, even though that's an exceptional example, and I acknowledge that, but we see the, what vision, which was very early, ended up being in terms of this return on investment for that community or those communities involved there. We talk about, you know, Charlestown, Jeffersonville, New Albany and surrounding communities. That now, by the way, is helping us. They are helping us. So their decisions early on and their risks are now benefiting the entire region. And I see that now more as someone who's involved with the, what I'm involved in as a board member of our Southern Indiana and the regional development authority. So I see that now more acutely than I ever have before as someone who is interested in regional development and regional economic opportunity. And I'm concerned that the county that I represent on that board is the county that may have now an opportunity to reap great benefit going forward. And I hope that we will at least take a pause now and take a look at what is the scope and what are the opportunities to fund that study.
Yes.
My name is Kathy Hale and I spoke at the commissioners' meeting in reference to this. I was actually there in reference to the Chorlins Advocacy Center and having been the person at the railroad that handled the acquisition of the rail line, fifteen acres and the building, one twenty-five for the Jefferson proving ground and watching the county not get their facility, and we won't even go into that ugly history. The county had the opportunity to purchase it, it did not carry through. So in reference to Mr. Kellums comments, the difference between River Ridge and the Jefferson proving ground is that Jefferson proving ground is private property. I've dealt with that property owner since nineteen ninety-five, have never found him willing to sell one single acre. His property was for sale with a realtor out of Cincinnati, Ohio at a cost of twenty-one million dollars, the entire facility. He has not sold off one inch of land other than to the state of Indiana for one point three or one point two million, it's on record, and that was a deal that he did, he paid five point one million at auction, I was at the facility at the auction opening, and then through other criteria, he got the cost reduced by over a million. So he paid about four million dollars, which has just been paid totally in the last one or two years because of legal maneuverings. We've had opportunities with people with for property for sale there and it never, it never came up to where he would sell it. So my question is, at the meeting, I did ask Mr. Brainer if he would get a letter from Mr. Ford stating that he is willing to sell parcels and what the approximate cost would be. So I guess I would ask, has that happened?
We don't have a final scope yet.
Well, but why, why do you need a final scope to know if he's going to sell property?
Are you asking him to stand up and answer you?
Sure.
Well, I mean, until.
Do we have a letter that it's for sale?
What did I, what did I answer you? I said, we don't have a final scope yet. We don't know what the cost is. We don't know what we're going to do exactly just yet. Once we get that, the first part is to have a meeting with Mr. Ford. All right, these are some things we're going to look at. What is your response?
My response is.
No, 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 I'm not asking you for your response. I'm going to ask Mr. Ford for his response. Okay, so before we get started, we're going to figure that out.
So are you asking for money to be given before you know the answer to that?
That's the first part of it. We're going to do some exploring, that's going to be the kickoff meeting for this. So there won't be a study starting yet, so there won't be ours charged yet.
Will there be, but will there be something awarded, like a thing awarded? How can we, my question is, how can we award something for something that we don't know it's for sale? And if it is for sale, what kind of price?
Not to exceed.
Yes.
So, yeah, so.
Those are the questions that I have. I would love.
The answer is nothing spent unless there's a reason for it to be spent. That's how.
But that's not how it was stated, that's why I'm questioning. I personally, trust me, I spent forty-three years with the railroad from nineteen ninety-five at the proving ground. My biggest disappointment was that the proving ground never got developed. I, more than anybody, want to see the proving ground developed. Do not think that's not the case. I want to see it developed, but I don't want to study something unless we know it's for sale.
Well, that's the point of that meeting, to find out if it's for sale. If it's not for sale.
I would think that meeting would take place before money would be put out there. That's all.
I'd just like to bring it to the point that the commissioners, there's no intent there for the county to buy a posting stamp of the ground. If anything comes to this, it will be through developers just like River Ridge. We're not asking to buy the proving ground. No, no, I mean, that's not my intent.
No, I mean, it was clearly laid out in the proposal.
Scope and a study because I talked to the commissioner and he said, we had no idea what to do, they had no idea it was going to turn into a goldmine. But they didn't put any money out, the developers. And I think everybody's missing the point here.
I don't think so. If there's nothing for sale, there's nothing to study.
Mr. Ford has said he is in agreement for development.
Okay, then let's see it in writing, and that's what I'm waiting for.
Warren, you have a comment?
Yes, Warren Ochsler from Hanover, Indiana. I understand the concern. When I first saw the five hundred thousand dollar figure for a study, my immediate response was, how could any study cost five hundred thousand dollars? Since then, with conversations I had with commissioners, I understand they're bringing the scope of that down, going to define that better and so forth. I agree one hundred percent that that property needs to be evaluated to see what potential is. The evaluation and the plan for how it would be used is going to have to come before Mr. Ford would ever think about putting a price on it. I have property at Hanover, two, three hundred acres, nothing the scale of the proving ground, but if the county or the town of Hanover came to me and said, we're thinking about doing a plan for your property and we want to know how much you want for it today, you wouldn't get any numbers from me, you wouldn't hear a thing. It's all going to depend on what the uses are going to be, how it benefits the, I feel that it benefits the community, how it fits in with my existing businesses and so forth. So I don't think that you're getting the cart before the horse by doing the study without having a commitment for the sale of the property. And I assure you, I've known Dean Ford for many, many years and I've done some business with him many times over the years. And Dean, if the arrangement is correct and the price is right, he'll sell the property. You know, he's not a, he likes to make a dollar, you know, like every other business person does if it can work out and benefit. He's facing challenges if it can't be pulled together. He has road infrastructure and so forth. There's going to be huge problems for him. So there's a lot of give and take and a lot of directions we can go, but I absolutely understand the council's concern with the first five hundred thousand dollar number on the table.
Correct.
But if that can be defined and what's going to be looked at, there's a potential for. for huge opportunity on that property.
Yeah.
There always has been.
And, you know, I think over the, we've been looking as council over this, I think for the past probably four months, and we've been listening to several people from the community. Kathy, I truly appreciate your comments today, and I think the council has listened to, you know, Dick Goodman, several different people, comments in the community that have brought a lot of different, great information and input to the community. Warren, we appreciate your comments too. And it, it is a hard decision, I think, that, that we have been grovelling over for several months, so.
Well, I want you to understand that I want to see the Proving Ground developed. I would like nothing more than that.
Correct.
But I just don't want to see $1 spent until I know there is property for sale. And, and a not to exceed, like, like Kathy said, you know, fine, I want to see a not to exceed, and I want to know it's for sale in parcels, because I don't think very many people are going to pay $21 million. And it also says in the study, 40 some hundred acres. There's only 3,500.
Right.
There's 3,400 and some acres. I don't know how you're going to study 40 some. There's not. They, they auctioned off 35, less than 3,500 acres, so it's 1,000 acres off.
Right. So- Anybody else have any questions for Kathy, since she's been out there for so many years?
And that's why we've reduced the scope. Okay? That's why we've gone through and, and, you know, I mean, I'm not sure, in this kind of process, one, I couldn't, I don't think we could have come up with the scope of a study right off the top of our heads. We couldn't have, so we had to reach out to someone who does this sort of thing for a living. And, and the end result is going to be a plan with several options on what's the best way to use this property, you know? And Mr. Ford may say, I really don't like the first one, but the other one is kind of interesting to me. Okay?
I just want to know he doesn't say it's all for sale or none is for sale. That's all, that's what I've heard for 20-plus years. So is it for sale in parcels and what is a not to exceed figure? Those are the two questions I have. And if he answers those to the affirmative, I am 100% on board, but I have not seen that yet. And I've requested it. So that, to me, needs to be answered before there's a study. Why study, why give a dollar? That ought to be a pretty simple question.
Good question.
You know, may I?
Yes, absolutely, Warren.
As a property owner and businessperson, there is not any way at all, if you came to me today, or the town of Hanover came to me today and said, we want a commitment from you that you'll sell all of this or you'll sell certain parts of it, without knowing what the parts are going to be and the dollars that are on the table, I can't start to make that decision. And I absolutely don't understand this thought process, I'll give you a price, but I guarantee you that I won't exceed. It, it doesn't mean anything. I'll say, well, that's easy enough. I can tell you I want $200,000 an acre and I'll guarantee you I won't exceed that. So it, it just doesn't make any sense to me.
Well-
For clarity, I was speaking of the study, the dollar amount not to exceed. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions, Ray?
Oh, I'm sorry. With all respect, Charlestown, River Ridge, they have right by their door, or right outside their door, I-71, I-64, I-65. They also have CSX Rail going right through there, and they have the river right there. We have no major highways through this area. And until that changes, it's going to be pretty tough to compensate for interstate and the railroad not going out to the, in essence, being out there at the Proving Ground.
The railroad isn't the Proving Ground.
This is a regional economy.
Are you finished, Ray?
I'm sorry.
No, no. But the, I did unofficial, I did a poll on my campaign page and asked people if they thought that that was a good investment to invest a half a million dollars into the JPG Airport slash Railroad slash Economic Development Plan. And I had about 85 people participate, and it was a 94 to 5% response, no, it's not a good idea. As I've been campaigning, I've campaigned and talked with over 350 people, and I've asked them if they thought it was a good idea and did not state my position at that time. I can safely say there was no one that spoke up for it. And I spoke to business owners, I spoke to all kinds of people, workers, investors, some of the major companies right up here on 50th Drive, and to a T, there was no one that really thought it was that great of idea to wait, to spend a half a million dollars on this survey. So with that said, I'll let Mr. Callens make his point, and then I'll take and come back.
There, I like this. Maybe the truth and transparency will come out. So on the poll and on 500,000, what I point I was trying to make was that, as I understood it, the number was a high water number for not to exceed, so therefore whatever the scope would define, spending would be up to that, and then the scope would actually help set the number. So a poll based on that number will be a poll that, you know, may or may not lead to meaningful results, especially if it wasn't a scientific poll. That's, but the more important point is about River Ridge. Okay, yes, they have great assets, and that's why I said it's a different story. But we are part of a regional economy. That's the whole point of, whole point of what we're involved in as a five-county regional economy and a five-county opportunity that has already started to bear real results, you know, to the tune of, you know, a couple million for Madison and 6 million for Hanover Ivy Tech. And I'm proud to have been a part of that over many years. But the idea behind this regional economy effort is that we all benefit from one another. And yes, we need to figure out how we can extend our tentacles into a Clark and Floyd counties. We need to figure out how we can feed the growth that's going on in those areas. We do not live in isolation. Jefferson County is not a county in and of itself. I love it here, or I would never return it here. But we are better and we grow better, and we have better jobs and a greater opportunity for a better future if we look forward and try to look at opportunities for growth.
The gentleman in the back over here, did you have something? Would you mistake your name, please?
My name is Adam King. Just a comment for the Shelter Board. As I was doing a lot of cleaning, Bobby, I did come across plans for a new building. They're probably in the one room.
I think we've got it copied down.
It was behind, well, it was behind the one container.
That was probably the one we saw.
In the adoption room.
BBH, I do remember that.
When she presented and, and had it on, you know, we saw-
It looked pretty nice. I came across it. One other thing I would just suggest with the things that you suggested, which are great, is maybe a cover over the top of the kennels outside for winter. You know, I don't think it would be that expensive, but as you're taking the pets out, they would have a cover. You know?
Actually, we did approve the cover, money for a cover last year, I don't think it ever got spent and went back into general.
You could actually just put poles and you could put a solid-
I don't remember that.
Livered roof.
I'd love to do it if we had the money.
I don't remember that.
Do you remember that?
I don't remember.
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I thought that, I thought that was covered.
I've slept since then.
Yeah.
Ray, did you mean permit or just the tarps?
Oh.
We, we had discussed it, but I didn't know.
I think it was discussed, but I didn't remember it being done.
Chris kind of remembers it too.
Something about the budget for the runs out.
We budget for the runs, and we did the concrete write-off about a year ago.
We'd have to go back for the minutes.
We'd have to go back and look at the minutes and the things and watch, you know, that way. You know?
We can get on that too.
Going, I, I'd just like to say on the economic development, what I have heard from people on audit, they, they think a study would be halfway good, but the problem is, they just, they think 500,000 is just way off of the ballpark. Maybe that's where we end, you know?
I, I had to put a number in there, right?
Right.
I mean, if I put $100,000, you guys would go all over. Then I come back, once they get the scope, I, I have a meeting on Monday with the CMT, we're going to finalize the scope, then they'll be able to go away and have a cost estimate. Then we can talk about a real number. Right now, it's, it's just some number I grabbed out of the air and said, all right, I want to put that in there. Once again, I don't know how much it's going to be. And so to throw that out is, well, the study's going to cost 500,000, I, I mean, that's what it, that's what's in the line item. I agree. But I put that there as a placeholder. I just, you know, we, we've learned some things along the way, so we're narrowing the scope down. I mean-
In my opinion, I'd say we wait for an actual number.
I mean, I hope by, by next meeting, you have the number and they'll have a finalized scope.
But, but-
But we've been, we've been discussing this for a long time, and with all due respect-
Yeah, but you-
Can I finish? Can I finish? With all due respect, there's a lot of things our county needs right now. The national economy is teetering. We don't know what's going to be in 2023. And as, for me, I'm, I'm all about securing Jefferson County right now.
So the RDA has told me that this study, or this moving forward with the project is second on their list for next year.
Correct.
So, but I can tell you, what, if there's no study completed, it's gone. There'll be no way they'll get, they'll do anything. What are you going to do with it? I have no idea, because we couldn't spend money to do a study.
So Dave, with that being said, there was an opportunity for a grant or something to help assist with that? Did that fall through or is that still happening?
No, they're still working through things and I, it, it may not be until June that they would know that. Well, but then if that's the case, and we're not going to put money up, well, then we won't be in line for next year, that's for sure. So.
I think the council's understanding was earlier this year that the-
Well, I hope to be able to get some funds for that.
That was my-
Because the first, I think, the first time out of the gate with these projects, they're like, whoa, okay. I think they found out later in the process that they have to handle the money differently to, I think the Indiana Economic Development Corporation changed some rules as they were moving forward. So while they thought they might have some, I don't know that they're quite as sure or definitely not sure. So, once again, meeting on Monday to kind of get the scope finalized, will give us a cost estimate after that. We'll have that for next month.
And, you know, I've said this once before, but I think what pops into my head is, I think the sour taste, for some folks, maybe not being open-minded, but, but from what we truly heard and what the community began to say, I think the sour taste was when community members were saying to us, just spend a half a million dollars for an airport study. As we know, it's not just an airport study. But unfortunately, there was truly a month timeframe when that is, I think, all the community thought, that was kind of forefront in our mind, like, oh, yeah, let's, we need a little more information.
Again, I mean, it was easy to say, well, it's just a placeholder. We don't know what the study's going to cost. It's going to be less than that.
Sure. And I, I also think we've learned some lessons. I, I kind of did this right away when I thought, seriously, is that what we're, we're looking at? Like, you know, I want to be open-minded of the potential that this county has and the potential that that property has, the history that that property has, but I also want to be a smart decision maker and one of seven voices for how we're going to-
Well, I, I hope that we've shown we've been smart decision makers as well. I mean, hopefully this is not, you know, we are not going out there just spending money left and right. You know, we, we went through a lot of effort to come up with a plan where we could help a lot of people in the county with our funds. Right?
Yes.
I mean, we got very specific. I've been asked, why did you do that? Why would you mess with that? Because I want to make sure that a lot of people benefited from what we got. And so to think that this is now, okay, well, now I've thrown all that out the window and I'm just going to go willy-nilly and do whatever I want, that's not the case at all.
I didn't know that Jennings County didn't give any fire departments any money.
I know, a lot of them did.
You should have seen the faces on the folks at Chelsea Jubilee when I presented in the chat. I mean, there was a quiver in the voice. They were that thankful, you know? I mean, people are appreciating what we're doing. I'm sorry, yes, you know, okay, do it again, but, you know, I, I don't know what the cost is going to be. I won't know what the cost is going to be until we get the scope finalized. How many people gave me comments on the scope? Right? Nobody did. So I'm not there on my own. You think I'm doing this, you know, I'm facing that, why don't I just throw it up there? All right, forget it, I'm done. This is something that's going to be big for the county. I'm sorry that, that people are just backing into accordance, well, I'm not going to spend that. Well, I don't know that we have to spend that. All right? I won't know exactly until we get a scope finalized. I don't think, well, I know, I could have, I don't know if Bobby and Ron could have come up with a scope to start with. What would we have done?
Drag trip.
Well, that's on, that's still on the table, you know? I mean, we laugh about that, but, you know, they, you know, Washington County tried doing a drag strip on their airport. Well, the airport really didn't like them taking their runways and making it a drag strip. Well, here we've got something. Well, we've got, we've got airspace limitations, but I tell you, a drag strip can go underneath that airspace pretty easily. I don't know. You know, I mean, a lot of recreation is going to be-
But we do commend your other decisions. We've, we've-
Thank you.
I, I guess the airspace brings up another question, it's restricted airspace, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so I'm wondering how planes would fly in and out.
Well, I'd like to answer that.
Yes, please.
We've already had, we've already had a presentation on that.
Okay, well, so I'm not going to say a lot, because part of what I know is either is or has been classified due to my prior employment. But I think that there's opportunity there, but I don't think it's entirely about airspace. I think that's a red herring. And I think there is space that can be used in the air.
I mean, in our discussions with the Air Force rep out there, helicopters and drones are fine. UPS right now is testing drones in Iowa for transporting cargo. Why are they doing it in Iowa? Because someone gave them a spot to do it in Iowa. I don't know, but, once again, I just don't know. Is that a possibility? Well, they do it in Iowa, and when they do it, they've got a distribution center 20 miles up in Versailles. I don't know. But that's probably-
Our meeting is next Monday?
With, to finalize the scope. And then once they have a, a scope that we've finalized, then they can come up with a cost estimate.
So you think by the next, by our next year-
Your next meeting, we'll have all that, that information together.
We'll have the final amount of what the cost would be.
I'd like to make a motion to the council. I'd like to motion that the $500,000 of ARP money be proposed, or that was proposed by the Commissioners for JPG Airport Railroad, or Railway and Economic Development Plan in proposal to our consultants to maybe be redirected for other items, and that if you want to, that if they, if the Commissioners would like to designate something less than 500,000, we would take and be willing to entertain that. So that's my proposal and motion.
I'll second it. All favor?
So hold it front. I give time for-
Hold on, there has to be some discussion.
Public comment.
I'll have some discussion.
Yeah, hello.
I, I just do not understand. You're going to have an actual number a week or so from now. Why in the world, when you're that close to having a week, an actual number, would you take any funding for it off the table at all? That's basically what the motion does, correct? It makes it impossible to fund this project. And as long as this has reached out, I realize it's went on flux quite some time, but it, I just, I don't understand. It just seems extremely ridiculous that the council would take a stand and say, we're not even going to consider your number a week from now, no matter what it is. And that's basically what you're doing, because there's no funds. A week is, a week, and your next council meeting, it isn't going to make any difference. No one has a plan to use those monies elsewhere. The Commissioners are going to have to come up with a plan, not the council. But I, I don't understand making that move now. It's just-
Another comment or a next one? I think you already know my arguments. I think what this does, this motion and this vote would kill momentum, and it would forestall the opportunity for this community, this county, and this city to take a s- to take a serious look and proceed with an opportunity that could employ hundreds and generate a lot of revenue for the county.
Well, in that proposal, it was, there would still be that possibility, just not the entire half move.
I believe that this vote would kill the momentum and therefore would really be a problem for the opportunity that exists before us. And I think that the chance before us far outweighs the benefit of the motion before us because what is before you now, as I understand it, is a not-to-exceed opportunity for a study to come within one week. Scope, refined scope, after which a cost would be assigned and that you would have the opportunity as public service representing us all to vote on that more accurately.
I am fine to wait a week. I am fine to wait. I'm not going to talk about, if I want a building project in my house a year from now, I don't want to still be talking about it. At least want to have quotes up there and know what my design is and at least be taking steps forward. So I don't want to be talking about who might study this in a year, but I am perfectly fine to wait a week until some numbers are out and to see in a little more detail what that scope slash study would provide. I also do feel like we are in our best interest to explore any grant opportunity. I will certainly do some research on my part because if we find out that it's only going to cost $150,000 for them to study some specific areas of an intent of this land and if we can get all or most of that covered, I'm proud that we're moving forward now and I know Sarah's been working to get the allotted amount with the ARP funding out to not-for-profits to be able to seek those funds when they lost fundraising opportunities during COVID. And I would not want to delay that because of money we're hovering over waiting for this. So the fact that that money that we've allocated for not-for-profits is still going to be gifted and that process is rolling and those applications can come in. You know, we don't have a plan tomorrow of what we would spend this additional $500,000 for if we completely extenuate this plan. So I would, I would lean to wait to see what we hear for November.
My thought is, if you're saying that we will have a full number and everything by the November meeting, I feel like this, but we, you know, we've waited this long, you know, I don't know that it's going to hurt us to wait a little bit longer.
Or could we have the vote?
You have a motion in a second?
We have a motion in a second.
In a second. All in favor? All opposed?
I'd like to wait and see.
I want to wait, that's what I.
I mean, with anything, I see a quote and I see the data behind it.
Me too.
And, you know, to the point of Heather's point, that money's not earmarked for anything at the moment and in 30 days I'm going to end it.
I mean, to your point earlier, you said, you know, you've seen consultants run away and do stuff. Well, that's what we're not going to let them do, you know?
Yeah, I think they would do, I think they would run away.
Well, I don't know if this guy would, but I was in the army. I saw guys that, as a contracting representative, those guys would, oh, you didn't want us to do that? Oh, we're sorry. I mean, we park in their building so they wouldn't do that. So, but yeah, I understand and I'm, you know.
My biggest reservations with all this and we found this out during the gel study was what it was going, what it's going to cost to get utilities into the pre-imagining. I mean, if it's a dollar, it's 10 million just to start because the infrastructure is horrible. The water, the sewer, the electric is barely, it's subpar for what is supported now alone anything else. So just, and I'm sure that's a piece of their study.
Yep.
To make sure what that looks like. But that's been my biggest concern, that and logistics. With that, look forward to seeing the state for next year.
I am too, yeah.
Anything else from the audience? Yes.
What I've come for each time this comes up is the Children's Advocacy Center and funding. Do you know at what point the grant fund company sent to you and awarded to agencies that have asked for funds? I look at the Children's Advocacy Center.
Not from Sarah.
Are there's an application?
It's our.
The dollar goes to what side?
I understand.
Application to do the 31st.
The application has been made, so that's my question.
And December is set, they will make the decision in November and it will be announced in December. It's all that in the form.
Okay, well, I look at our county and economic development is very, very important, but I also look at our future generations. And in Jefferson County, out of 24 counties, the Children's Advocacy Center, Jefferson County is number one out of 24 in a bad way as far as victims of sexual and physical abuse to our children. Those children are our future generations that are going to be doing the economic development or that are going to be on the welfare rolls. If we don't put some money into helping these children at this point, and the Children's Advocacy Center is the one that helps these children and gets them the assistance so that the perpetrators can be convicted and these children can get help. And we, out of 24 counties, give the least. And I think that is an embarrassing number and I, as a citizen of this community, am appalled at that. And I, I do not work for them, I am not a volunteer for them, but I am a survivor of past abuse that my parents didn't even know about. Had it something, had a program been in the schools that can be put into our Madison school system for around $45,000 to $50,000? If there had been a program there and I had known about it, maybe I could have gone for help. Maybe it wouldn't have affected me throughout my life. And I want to see our children, our most valuable asset, helped. And I don't know, and everywhere I see these people going, they're running into red flags. I mean, they're running into walls and our community is not giving money. And I do not understand it. I'm a lifelong resident here and I just do not understand it when you have state police officers saying it's a valuable asset for their case and their prosecution. And if somebody like recently that's been accused is innocent, then their interviews will help that person be clear also. So it's not just for conditions, it's for somebody to be absolved that is innocent, that's been accused. And how we cannot give some significant money to that is beyond me. And, you know, I have a lot of people that I know that have been advocating for much time and that's how I became aware of it. And I just don't understand not helping. I am all for economic development and if they come back with dollars that make sense and we have an individual that is a willing seller, I am 100% for that. But the majority of what I read in that study, I can go through and do on my own from being out there for 20 some years. I want to see meat to it. I want to see some real meat to what they're going to do because I can give the cursory review they're asking. I have the document at the railroad that can give a lot of the answers to the, they're barely touching the surface of most of the stuff in that study. It needs to be some more in-depth and that was what I would ask that they ask for on Monday, is in-depth on the roads. I drive it, you know the condition. So, but I just want to see some funding for our future generations of children.
Kathy, hoping to know this, there are many 501(c)(3)'s in this county that are not in our existing budget and the Children's Advocacy Center is in our budget for 2023 and they have.
For $5,000?
And we have this much to stretch for this many agencies, but they also have the opportunity to apply for this extra gifted funding and that could be a once-in-a-lifetime, we hope, we hope we don't face another pandemic which turns into.
They have applied for this.
Which is great and we're thrilled that we were able to allocate a really substantial amount of money to.
I understand with a lot of agencies, but I can't think of anything more important than what this is.
We appreciate your passion too about it.
Yes, thank you, Kathy.
Just to that point, when they started the advocacy here and everything, then we put in close to over $100,000 at the time. It was a 25, 25 and 25 for four years. Four times 25,000 each year to get that all running and started and everything down there at the time. That's what it is. So I just wanted you to be aware, I didn't know whether they were aware of that, but it was done. The council did that.
It's my first year on council.
Which is a pretty substantial amount compared to some other.
Yeah, some of the others, but to get one started here because we were always having to go to Davenport County and that sort of thing until we have one here. So yeah, we took that step and.
There's an opportunity now to get our own center and grants being made for that.
Good. Anything else from there?
Grants are never funded because they're not always guaranteed.
No, they require, and they require matching money.
And like, because I sit on CASA and we struggle with that every year.
And I'm sure there are going to be lots of people asking for the funds that they have the service getting.
I'll motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
We have to read the budget.
Oh, approve the budget, oh, okay. I thought we were there, I'm ready.
Okay, if you want me to, I can read the 2023 proposed budget by fund number in total.
Yes. Okay, good.
All right, Fund 7303 Casino Revenue, $250,001,000 County General, which would be $12,148,296. Fund 1215 Election Registration, $186,404. Fund 1224 County Reassessment, $146,383. Fund 1140 Coombe Courthouse in the amount of $550,000. Fund 4915 Project Income Community Corrections in the amount of $368,154. Fund 4008 Animal Shelter in the amount of $327,972. Fund 1176 Motor Vehicle Highway in the amount of $3,845,357.
Would you repeat that, Kim? Three million?
I did have to make an adjustment on that due to a 4% raise being left out. Fund 1169, 1169, which is Local Road and Streets in the amount of $700,001. Fund 1135 Coombe Bridge in the amount of $1,740,980. Fund 1159 Health Department in the amount of $768,742. Fund 1168 Local Health Maintenance in the amount of $35,637. Fund 1222 State 911 in the amount of $398,851. Fund 1142 Coombe Jail in the amount of $165,408. Fund 4909 Jefferson County Park Board in the amount of $11,000. Fund 2300 Cemetery Board in the amount of $30,100. 1138 Coombe Cap Development in the amount of $577,710. 1191 Riverboat Wade Chair in the amount of $97,000. 8899 Clerk 4D Incentive in the amount of $9,400. 1119 Clerk Perpetual in the amount of $28,000. 9603 IDOC Pre-Trial Grant in the amount of $60,245. 1202 Surveyors Cornerstone Perpetual in the amount of $25,000. 1181 Platbook Maintenance in the amount of $9,600. 4999 Local Health Trust in the amount of $5,000. 8105 Health COAG Grant in the amount of $116,754. 4903 Historic Gaming Revenue in the amount of $746,000. 1176 Motor Vehicle Highway Restricted Funds in the amount of $746,000. 7304 Board of Tourism in the amount of $700,008,098. Prosecutor IJC Grant in the amount of $107,168. 9117 PSC User Community Corrections in the amount of $17,112. 1121 Drug Court Grant in the amount of $6,502,000. Probation User Fees in the amount of $65,760. 2400 Infraction Deferral Prosecutor in the amount of $5,000. 8895 Title 4D Incentive Fund, $16,130. 7105 Sales Disclosure in the amount of $10,009,114, which is 2023 Community Corrections State Grant in the amount of $76,810. 4910 JCATT Community Corrections for $25,676. 4902 Economic Development Casino Revenue in the amount of $51,800. 1182 Pre-Trial Diversion in the amount of $59,581. 1112 Lit in the amount of $1,058,151. 9101 Supreme Court Pre-Trial Grant in the amount of $182,912. 136 Jail Treatment in the amount of $30,400. 911 County City and Hanover Fund in the amount of $753,335. 9109 Prosecutor Diversion Grant in the amount of $59,409. 1128 Justice Partners Grant in the amount of $60,000. 9116 Drug Court CRRP in the amount of $51,130. And 9115 State Grant Year 2023 in the amount of $698,825, which makes a total of the Jefferson County budget for all funds being $27,443,977.
I just think she deserves a pat on the back for.
That was, that was.
Do you want a copy?
That'd be wonderful.
Okay.
I saw him feverishly. And you changed that to 443977, correct?
443977.
Yeah.
Heather, you have your copy now?
Yes, I want to make copies for everyone. And then we just need a motion to move forward to the final reading on 10/24/2022 with the public adoption meeting.
Make a motion that we move forward to the 10/24 public reading.
I'll second it. All in favor? Hey.
Now.
Now.
Can I make my motion now?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second it. All in favor?